Notice is hereby given of Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 4:30 on Monday, July 10th, at Friendswood City Hall Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to have an invocation by Pastor Tracy Barnett with Reach Church, and then we're going to go on to item three, Pledge of Allegiance, United States and Texas.
Father, we just come here tonight. We just thank you, Lord, for the privilege of being here and serving one another. I thank you for these men and women tonight that serve in this capacity. Lord, we pray for, as we always do, for your help, your leadership, and your guidance, your wisdom, your conviction. Lord, I pray that as we serve one another, we serve you. Lord, that we do so with vision and conviction, with humility, with a desire to please you in all that we do. And I pray that what we do here tonight is we serve our community. God, we can do in the spirit of unity and compassion, but with vision. And I pray that whatever we do, God, that you'll get all the glory and the praise out of it. And whatever we do will lift you up as we come together as a city. And, Lord, we just pray that you have blessed this meeting and be here with us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the City Manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Melinda, do you have any cards? No, sir? All right. We'll move on. Work session. Rob, emergency medical services discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had a discussion at your retreat regarding a number of planning items as we move forward. One of the items that was discussed at some length was with regard to our current volunteer fire department and the provision of EMS services in Friendswood. I have a few slides I will go through this evening. I will try to keep it short, but if you need, feel free to stop me and ask any questions.
And this was the workshop we had with EMS leadership and...
Correct.
...fire department leadership?
We had leadership, both the president and vice president of the FEFD present, both the fire and EMS chief, as well as the assistant chief with us that day, as well as our two citizens group volunteers.
Okay.
Approximately four months ago, council directed that a subcommittee be created of citizens, council representatives, both council member Rocky and Mike Foreman, and representatives from the FEFD, as well as staff, look at our ongoing provision of emergency medical services, as well as our volunteer fire department. As you know, the provision of these services are currently done through a volunteer organization known as the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department that has been a contract with the city since 2004. They served in a similar role prior to that. Over the last few years, however, we've seen escalations in cost for paid staff within the department, as well as a decrease in our donation amount and an impact to our ability to replace and upgrade capital equipment. So council tasked this temporary committee to investigate historical trends, benchmark our city and our services with neighboring communities and similar communities, and then try to develop a recommendation that can see us through the next 20 years. The subcommittee members are listed on the screen before you. Some of the initial guiding principles of this group was no solution that we come up with can lessen the quality of service that we currently receive. So we can't simply go out and find a resolution that's of cheaper price but lesser quality. We evaluated whether or not the current partial makeup of partially volunteer and partially paid EMS services, is it working? Does it need to be tweaked? We looked at the fire division as well, that also has a combination of partially paid and partially volunteer. With respect to item two and three, on the EMS side, right now, 70% is paid, 30% is volunteer. On the fire department side, it's the reverse, 30% is paid, 70% is volunteer. We looked at the current methodology providing funding for capital equipment, fire engines, ambulances, so on and so forth, and evaluated whether or not that method is sustainable. And we also put before us that no recommendation or no solution be based on political realities. That this group's charge was simply to come up with some resolutions or some recommendations and present them to council. The team worked through the process that's commonly defined as the Six Sigma approach, basically defining our issue, our problem, measuring it, analyzing it, and finding ways to improve and reporting back. Well, over the last 35 years, Friendswood has grown in population from a little over 12,000 to the 40,000 that we currently are today. Surprisingly, over that same time period, we have grown in the median age. Back in 1980, during that decennial census, our median age was 29 years old. At the last time, it was estimated in 2015, that median age had crept up to 42 years of age. So our population is not only getting bigger, it's getting older.
People come here and they stay.
They don't leave. If you look at the current distribution of age, we have quite a healthy number of folks between the ages of zero to 18, so our kids' population is pretty strong. We see a dip between 18 and 40. And then we tend to get back up in higher volumes when you look at 40 and above. That can be for a variety of reasons. One, our good school system encourages young kids, our families with kids, to move to the area. However, the higher price point of homes make it harder for younger families to move into the area, so the folks that are moving in are a little older in age. Over that same time period, we've seen a growth in housing. The single-family housing stock has gone anywhere from a little under 3,000 single-family homes to a little under 13,000 today. Predominantly, those single-family homes make up the lion's share. And when I say lion's share, I mean just about all of our residential properties in Friendswood. There are some multifamily complexes between apartments and senior living facilities, both assisted and independent, but predominantly, we are a single-family bedroom community. Over the last 10 years, we've seen some variations in our response for service. The two lines on the chart before you are our EMS calls and our fire calls. As you can see in that 10-year period, fire calls for service have remained relatively constant, around 750. Our emergency medical services has gone up from a little under 2,000 to a little under 3,000 today. Of those calls and EMS, 1,500 of them were for transport. So it's not just responding to the incident in a 911 call, but also taking that individual to the hospital. This is a chart that basically correlates our growth in age and population to our growth in EMS calls. The reality is, as our population ages, we have a greater need for EMS services. Coincidentally, those two correlate on roughly the same trajectory. Of our overall EMS responses over the last three years, 48% of them were to single-family homes, followed closely by, or followed by, the next large group of senior living facilities at 19% and multifamily at 9%. What's telling about this slide is, you recall, single-family made up roughly 90% of our residential homes, but only represent half of our call for service. And senior living facilities make up less than 5%, and they are a drain of roughly 20% or a draw of roughly 20% of our EMS services. On the fire side, there's a little bit more equitable breakdown in the calls for services, namely between police and medical assistance calls, vehicular accidents with spills, vehicular fires and equipment fires, with the remainder being made up of either a building fire or external landscape fire, and so on and so forth. When we look at where the calls for services are coming from on the EMS side, you can, and this correlates with our previous slides, roughly the 60, 50 to 60, and then the 60-plus age uses the lion's share of our calls for service. No comments about any of y'all at the dais right now.
I'm on one of them, too.
If you were to look at the per person, per resident type, over that same three-year period, senior living facilities, far and away, account for the majority of the calls in the community. And what I mean by persons per household, in any given single-family unit, you'll have 2.85 persons per household. That includes both parents and kids, and that's based on the decennial census, as it's done every 10 years. If you correlate that to the same persons per household in a senior living facility, each door accounts for some number of calls annually. Historically, since it has been a volunteer organization, we provide an opportunity for residents to make a donation on their water bill to go help fund the purchase of capital equipment for fire engines, ambulances, large equipment, and so on and so forth. This is done in a $6 donation every water bill, which is $3 a month, and historically is based on your water bill. So the way the units or the accounts are set up today, every single-family home gets one water bill. An apartment complex, depending on how they metered the complex, may only get one or two water bills, but they may have 100 dwelling units within that system. For the most part, the fund has been able to sustain itself. Up until a few years ago, we saw that our obligations to replace equipment was outpacing the donations coming in. We've evaluated opportunities to adjust the bill and raise the fee, or find different ways of giving those folks an opportunity to donate, and we'll make some recommendations later on tonight. But basically, as I said before, if you have a single-family home, you have the opportunity to make the $6 donation. You may have an apartment complex with one bill but 100 units, and they only make us an opportunity to make one $6 donation. So it's not as equitable.
There's nothing stopping us from donating more, is there?
There's nothing stopping us from donating more, but it would require a check written to the city. It's not through the water bill.
Right.
Or directly to the volunteer fire department, and they do get a few of those donations Continuing on that discussion, the chart on the left shows our 15-year plan, or the volunteer fire department's 15-year plan to replace equipment. The blue line is the capital demand, so every time they purchase a fire engine, whether it's financed or if it's paid for in cash, that's the expenditures that are made on an annual basis. The orange line is intended to reflect the consistent flow of cash to keep that system, or the current flow of cash, as we're currently receiving it, and the dotted line is what it should be to maintain solvency. The chart on the right shows culmination of all those, and it shows in roughly two years, we're going to bring in less dollars on that donation than we have dollars going out. So in essence, we're either going to have to extend the life of our equipment, or we're going to have to not, rather scale back the service levels.
We do the vehicle replacement program. We budget for it?
Correct.
On the fire department and EMS, just like we do our city vehicles?
We do not. On the city side, equipment's charged back to the department, so whether you have a new vehicle in that department or not, you're charged an ongoing fee, so that when it's time to replace it, it's replaced. The volunteer fire department, that's working on a donation model, doesn't have that same feature.
They do, however, have a vehicle replacement plan that they manage and try to make, stretch the dollars as far as they can go to accomplish that.
That's a good point to bring up.
Collectively, you're looking at approximately a shortfall of $160,000 per year in about two years, and 2/3 of that capital replacement program is for fire division needs, because they have the more expensive equipment, and 1/3 of it is for EMS. When we looked at ourselves relative to other cities, we looked at nine local cities, those that are before you on the screen. Council also directed that we look at other cities that have similar makeup in terms of population, demographics, commercial versus residential splits. And when we looked out throughout the state of Texas, five cities came to mind with those similar demographics as Friendswood, in the Austin area, the city of Leander, in the Dallas area, the Colony in Wiley, and in the Fort Worth area, Keller and Burleson. When you look at our calls for service relative to those cities, for the most part, we're on par, with the exception of some tourist destinations or areas that have large commercial bases. And those two that have the tourist destination or a large commercial basis are our neighboring cities, not those five in the other parts of Texas. Fire, we're more on par with all the benchmark cities that were evaluated, with the exception of Galveston, and as you can expect, Galveston's a tourist attraction, so their calls for service will be quite a bit higher. Of all the benchmark cities, with Friendswood being the 15, EMS services are provided in 67% of those cities with a fully paid staff. 13% are funded through a partially volunteer or partially paid system, similar to what we have. Another 13% contract with a private entity or with another agency. And then 7% of them operate with the county contract. So the county's got an ambulance service, and they contract with them. On the fire side, it's not as convoluted. 53% are all paid, 20% are volunteer, with some paid, some load your Friendswood, and 27% are all volunteer. Of all the benchmark cities we've looked at, we're the only ones that do not bill for EMS services. So today, if you were to call for an ambulance and be one of the fortunate few that does get a Friendswood ambulance, that's a free ride to the hospital. What I mean by fortunate few, if that ambulance is busy and you get a mutual aid call from Clemson, Pearland, Alvin, our citizen would be billed, and it just depends on the luck of the draw as to which ambulance shows up.
But if we go to...
If we respond to mutual aid in those neighboring cities, that Pearland resident or that Alvin resident gets a free ride. Of those benchmark cities looked at, and all of them that bill for service, routinely they collect roughly 30 to 40% from those EMS bills. Between insurance company paying the bills and any private contributions towards the bills, they roughly, if they bill for a $1,000 bill, they'll get 30 to 40% of it, $300 to $400 per bill. Over the last 10 years, there's been a growth in all departments, not just the volunteer fire department, but there's been a growth in all departments. We've gone, since this is discussions about the FEFD, we've gone to a little under $800,000 a year in our annual budget for the FEFD, to $1.5 million in 2016. Currently, we're at $1.6 million and growing. The FY '17 budget that we're currently in, it's $1.6 million. Of that, EMS salaries make up $438,000. We have roughly another $150-plus thousand in operational cost. And coming up with the budget discussion later this budget cycle, you'll have another $65,000-plus worth of EMS-related decision packages for consideration from council. So this dollar amount is growing annually. We looked at what the cost would be if we went to a fully paid service. The costs enumerated on the screen above account for adding about 12 new EMS staff over the next two-year period, and it doesn't have to be two-year period, it just depends on what council would like to do. Of roughly $850,000, adding costs for your EMS chief, EMS part-time medical director currently, since it, even though it's majority paid, it's still considered a volunteer organization, that the services of the medical directors donated. If we were to go to a fully paid system, that cost would be $24,000. And then we'd have to look at funding some upfront costs to start instituting billing. Our current process for providing EMS and fire services is the blue area of that chart. We're roughly at 1.6. As we continue on the trend that we're currently seeing, we'll be at a little over $2 million here in the next 10 years, or the next 14 years, 13, 14 years. If we were to go to a fully paid staff, you just add that cost on top. So if we were to go to a fully paid EMS staff, we'd be looking at another $1 million a year worth of operational cost.
Can I make a point?
Yes, sir.
It appears to me by the charts that the growth in Friendswood is outpacing the growth of volunteers.
It is, not in the growth of volume, but the growth in demand for service.
Correct.
And that correlates back to our aging population.
Right. And our population...
And our population is growing. Yes, sir. With EMS billing being one of the questions that the group tackled or was wrestling with, we looked at not only what our neighboring cities' experience were, but also what we realistically can anticipate in revenue recovery if we were to start charging for EMS services. In addition to looking at our neighboring cities, we ran a mathematical simulation that did 12,000-plus simulations and came back with the following result. If we were to institute billing and adopt fees similar to our neighboring cities, there's a 95% chance you'll recover $500,000 or more. There's a 75% chance you'll recover $825,000 or more, and then roughly 50/50, anything at a million or more. As you go higher in dollar amounts recovered, the less likely it'll be. On the volunteer water bill donations, as I mentioned before, we're currently at $3 a month, $6 every bill. We're recovering roughly $240,000 this year. Anticipated, if we were to increase that to $6 a month, you would get a little under $400,000. And we did make some allowances for, by raising the donation amount, you may lose some folks from donating. Throughout all this, I would encourage anybody that gets a water bill, please donate to the volunteer fire department. It takes two seconds, and it provides a world of good for our group. What does all this mean? If we were to go to a fully paid staff, we're looking at having to expend roughly $1.16 million more than we are today. We don't currently have that funding, so that money would have to come from somewhere. If we were to charge for service, we would recoup something reasonably. We'd recoup a good lion's share of that dollar amount, but we're not going to cover all of it, so there's going to be funding coming from other revenue sources. Yes, sir?
This covers the capital shortfall as well as the 1.6?
Yes, sir. If we were to maintain a free service, and by free, it's not really a free service, because the taxpayers are picking up the bill, you, me, and everybody here would be spending roughly 3.5 to 4 cents more on their property taxes. What did we learn from the data we looked at? The current operating model on the fire division side of 70% volunteer and 30% paid is currently sustainable. We haven't had any issues, based on our call volume being relatively flat, and the volunteer fire department's ability to recruit new volunteers, this has not been as big of an issue. However, with respect to the capital expenditures, our need to replace equipment and keep it current, that is an issue, and we do need to find ways to stop the bleeding, so to speak.
If our volunteer fire department goes maybe to Nassau Bay, do they get paid?
No, but if our fire department comes, their fire department comes here, they don't get paid either.
Okay.
Fire's different. There's no insurance agency being billed.
Just wanted to clarify that, too.
On the EMS side, the capital donations, if we don't do something to address the $160,000 a year shortfall, you can start seeing a degradation in the equipment that's used, and just equipment will have to be used, or the life of the equipment will have to be extended. On the EMS side, our call increases are mostly being driven by the growth in population and aging, as we mentioned before. Citizens over 60 are roughly 60% of the total calls. Citizens living in senior living facilities are six times more likely to have EMS calls than those living in a single-family home. Fire calls do not seem to follow that same trend. They're relatively flat. And since the population is flattening out to some extent, but the median age is growing, EMS calls, we can, safe to say, will continue to grow. There has been a percent decrease, as I mentioned before, in volunteer hours for EMS services. Over the last three years, we've added a paid staff position each year as part of the budget cycle, and there, as I said before, there's another $65,000-plus worth of EMS-related decision packages for council consideration later this budget cycle. If we were to move to a fully funded EMS, but stay with the predominantly volunteer fire division, we'd look at about $1 million to our current operating budget, over and above the 1.6 that we're spending today. Friendswood is unique in that we don't charge for service, so the insurance companies are getting a break here in Friendswood. Your premium, my premium, does not go down whether we get a free ambulance ride. It's the same one way or the other. And as I mentioned before, ambulance billing is a variable gain, so I can't guarantee you the dollar amount that you would recoup if you were to bill, but based on our neighbors' experiences, you'd get roughly 30 to 40%. Realistically, you're looking at about $700,000 a year for Friendswood.
Is there any way to... I would think that 95% to 99% of people insured are insured in Friendswood.
We have that, those percentages, as the census tracks that information for us, and well over 80, close to 90% have insurance. And then of our elderly population, they have Medicaid, and Medicaid will pay, Married Medicare, sorry.
Is there a way you could set it up, or whatever their insurance company paid is what you, you know, so you don't go after the people later?
Yes, sir, and that's been the practice of most communities.
I just thought I'd ask that in front of the camera.
Yes, sir.
And that was included, when you saw that bar chart of probabilities, that was included in that?
That's how we came up with the numbers.
Yeah. You're going to get what the insurance pays and very little more.
I didn't want to put anybody in a bind.
So solutions. We can do nothing and continue on the same path that we are. No joke intended, but that's the Wile E. Coyote approach. Councilmember had shared that graphic with us. Eventually, we'll run out of, I won't name names, we'll run out of cliff and we'll fall. We can do nothing but try to find better incentives so that we can increase volunteerism. The unfortunate reality with that solution is, though, the only incentive we can possibly think of is to pay them, which we have been doing. So... Yes, sir.
I guess I would point out that there's certain training requirements that are necessary for the EMS volunteers. Would you turn the mic off?
Yes. Councilmember Gustafson was asking the training requirements. On the fire division side, it's different. This is above...
Much more on risk, and there's a lot of personal expense involved with that.
Correct.
And it's, and this has become a bigger and bigger issue over time.
Correct.
It's getting to the point where it's almost unrealistic for somebody to, expect somebody to pay for this training out of their own pocket, if they're going to serve in that sort of role.
Correct. For the firefighting side, you can be a volunteer firefighter and not have to go through the same training requirements as a paid firefighter in another community. On the EMS side, it's different. The same requirements for a paid EMS, and I was told not to use the term professional, but I can't think of the other term right now. But if you were to get paid by another agency, you would have to have the same credentials as a volunteer and vice versa. So the incentives for getting that certification and then volunteering your time aren't there. We could move to a fully paid EMS division and find ways of either passing, or one option is to pass those costs on to our taxpayers, as we have been the last few years, and find ways to help supplement the water bill donation. We can try to offload some of the cost for the cost increases onto ambulance billing and try to find ways to shore up our donations, or we can do a combination of the above. Real quick, going through the pros and cons of each of the options. If we do nothing, when it says no impact to the city budget beyond the need for covering increased operational demand, that is the approach we've been doing for the last few years, and that is decision packages councils consider each year. We're able to retain the free EMS service, and free again is simply that if you got an ambulance ride, you don't get billed unless you're picked up by a neighboring agency or, and you are paying for it in your tax rate.
Perhaps we should use the term unbilled.
Unbilled.
EMS, because you're right, it's not free.
On the downside to this, do nothing... On the downside to this do-nothing approach, there's going to be a reduction in our capital equipment fund. Because of that, you're going to have a degradation of services. Response times may be impacted as volunteer, calls for volunteers with no additional staff available to respond, so we're going to have to rely on our mutual aid. So, our folks will be getting a bill if mutual aid comes. If we do nothing but try to find better incentives, there will be a budget impact. It may be minimal, but that incentive, again, will depend on whether you're paying somebody in some way, shape, or form. The unbilled service continues, and there's a reduced risk to our fire EMS capital fund. On the negative side, obviously, we don't know what other incentives to offer aside from pay. Service will suffer if we're not successful in getting more volunteers, and the number of mutual aid calls will go up. If you move to a fully paid EMS over the next few years and increase the tax rate to offset it, you will continue to have the ability to have unbilled EMS rides, but our property tax rate would grow maybe to an extent that would, may require a rollback election, in which case then you have the potential of a petition being filed, an election taking place, and that tax rate increase being denied. If you were to go to fully paid staff, obviously, you'd have the same or better service levels because we can guarantee a second ambulance, and the number of mutual aid calls would go down. This is the same as the last slide, but it's allowing for EMS billing. The impact of the tax rate's minimal. It will be some impact to the tax rate because, as I said, you will not recover most likely all the costs from going to a fully paid staff, but you would recover a good portion of it by billing for EMS services. The number of calls for mutual aid will go down, and volunteers would still be welcome, but we wouldn't have to rely on them. Yes, sir.
I just want to make it clear, in no way, shape, or form are we trying to limit the number of volunteers.
Correct.
The volunteers that we have are exceptional, and I've heard people asking, am I not going to be allowed to volunteer? Well, no, that is not the intent here.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
On the negative side, there will be no longer unbilled, I used a lot of double negatives there, unbilled service calls. If we were to go to a fully paid staff, we'd have to somehow establish some sort of change management on the volunteer fire department. With having a paid division and an unpaid division, there would be some management issues that will have to be tackled so that the two can exist peacefully. And then we still haven't addressed anything with regard to the water bill donation and its impact to single-family homes versus multifamily and senior living facilities. At the retreat, council gave us direction to maintain the current model on the fire side and go out for requests for proposals to see what our cost comparisons would be. Not necessarily go out for requests for proposals to replace the EMS side, but to see what dollar amounts we're talking about. With that, I turn it over to council for any questions or any other direction. Yes, sir.
On the, that second item there, the RFP?
Yes, sir.
And again, you know, we asked for that because it was one piece of data we didn't have. We just didn't know what contract it might be. Will we be able to see the RFP before you send it out?
Yes, sir. The staff's plan is to present, similar to the workshop we're having with you this evening, is to present that request for proposal language to council to get your blessing before it's broadcast. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank the members of the subcommittee that helped us out with all this. Councilmember Rocky was at the forefront of this effort. We had Lisa Lundquist and Sean Reeves from the city that volunteered their time. Thank you, Sean. I don't see Lisa here tonight, but I want to thank her also for, it was a lot of time that we spent over the last five, six months working through this, and appreciate that. Of course, Rick McPhee and Greg Otto from the volunteer fire...
They were there with us every...
They were there, Mo, of course, Roger, Chief Cause. Don't want to leave anybody out here. Arnold was there, giving us legal advice.
Lisa Camp and Roy Hunter.
Roy Hunter. Yeah, thank you all for all of your time that you spent with us. Stan, I said Chief Cause. You looked right at him.
His reputation precedes him, so he's two.
Yes, Stan, thank you twice.
Is there, is it, tell me the difference between RFP and RFQ.
An RFQ is a request for qualifications, so you're not getting prices back, you're just getting the qualifications for their ability to provide the service.
What if we keep the current makeup 70/30 and just start charging for ambulance rides?
That's definitely an option if council's interested in doing that.
Well, that was more of a question because I looked, you know, going through all this, it seemed that the main move was to move to a fully paid EMS, and I was just wondering, did you evaluate if you stayed at 70/30 and you start charging for ambulance rides, will we be able to provide the services that we provide today?
What we were told throughout this process is if you were to start billing for ambulance service, the volunteers, the few volunteers we have today, would no longer volunteer. I don't know if that's actually the case or not. So, that's where the scenario went down, how much would it cost us to go to fully paid. We can obviously work with the volunteer fire department as an organization and encourage them, hey, we see, we see the calls for service going up and we really need, we want to offer you more assistance, but we can't change that makeup. It would be up to them whether or not they're able to retain their volunteers.
Well, as far as the calls for service, the calls for service are what they are, whether you're going out to mutual aid from a neighboring community or you hire five times the staff and five times the ambulances.
Correct.
Right? The calls for service are the calls for service, and if we stay where we currently are, we're short funding, correct? And so, as far as the free ambulance ride, the free ambulance ride, again, as it has been stated, is only if you get a Friendswood ambulance. My question is, is that, you know, did you look at keeping it at 70/30, keeping what we have? Everything else is going to go out to mutual aid and charge for rides for Friendswood ambulances?
And the answer is yes. The leadership just simply told us that they may lose that 30% volunteer, even if we told them, this is the only funding you're getting. But yes, the answer is yes.
Did they give an explanation of...
The explanation was simply that neighbors helping neighbors. And so, if by billing for that service, you're no longer providing that altruistic service.
Well, I would tend to disagree with that because I think that anybody that's in the EMS profession or the fire profession, especially from a volunteer perspective, they do that because that's in their heart. That's what they do, whether it's military men and women, or EMS, or fire. But again, this is just a cost analysis, and we're trying to provide the best cost to the citizens, obviously at the lowest price, so...
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to know about the evaluation of that particular model.
Yes, sir.
Can I make an added comment there? Some of our EMS volunteers are people who've been doing it a long time.
Yes.
And they're Friendswood residents, and they really exhibit a huge amount of leadership. But over the same period of time, an increasing number of our volunteers are young people trying to get into the business, don't live in Friendswood. And so, if they come and they volunteer for us for two years, they get the training and they get the experience to allow them to go get a job in this field. So, we're increasingly seeing a lot of our volunteers being in that category as well, so they're not the, the model we all have, it's, is it's the person down the street, may not be the case in terms of volunteers. Now, the long-acting volunteers we have are sensational. They really, you know, sort of drive the bus right now, but what we're, everything indicates that the amount of volunteer hours in comparison to them or calls is going to continue to slide.
Councilmember Gustafson. For those in the EMS service that, or I guess would hate to see the change to paid ambulance service, I certainly understand where you're coming from, and I can appreciate the community, I guess the sense of community spirit, but there's some financial realities here that we're faced with. And one of the realities, quite frankly, is that, is we're not going to be shaking down some 80-year-old woman for her last $2,000. We're going to be charging insurance companies that are contracted to pay this if they're billed, and you're already paying for that, whether you live in a city with free ambulance service or not. And I forget, I suppose I could look back in the presentation, just what the percentage was of insurance paid versus private pay. But it's significantly, a significant chunk, well over 50% of what's paid, is paid through insurance. I'm paying for insurance myself that covers an ambulance ride, and I'm sure the Blue Cross Blue Shield's quite happy they don't have to pay it. Further to the point, what was the number I heard? $700,000 a year?
Roughly.
So, it's in excess of $50,000 a month that we're just flushing down the toilet by not acting on this. I'd say if nothing else, right now, start the process to charge for the ambulance rides. And there's some other things that are going to have to be done to cover the shortfall, but that shortfall grows by $50,000 a month by not doing anything. That's, in my mind, a real easy one. And I should hope nobody would stop volunteering over there. We want to make sure that you've got the best equipment, everything that you need, but it costs money to provide that stuff. And I think the way this is all being paid for right now is inequitable. There's, the lion's share of the cost is being borne by people that don't use the service. So, my two cents.
Those of you out there that have served in the capacity we're discussing, I kind of correlated to the military, no man left behind, neighbor helping neighbor. I'm passionate about that. My father served in the military, and I'm sure there's other men up here that we know have served in the military, and we understand. It's different when it comes down to raising the budget four cents or things like that. So, it, there's a fine line to walk here, and I'm sorry we're even having to do this, but the donations have dropped off, and the need for equipment and training is going the other way, and the volunteers are going the other way. So, we're, we have no conclusion yet. We're just presenting you the facts that have been presented to us.
Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the mayor's sentiment. One thing that's very clear in this data is, and from all the data received, this is not being driven by a lack of poor service. The service has been outstanding. I know that in my position, I get people all the time who stop by and tell me they had some medical, they can go on and, you know, EMS was there so quickly, took care of them, and we get fabulous service. It is an economic reality. Now, me personally, before we do something, I'd like to have all the data, and I'd like to make sure that we get citizens, you know, ample opportunity to state their opinions and we find out how people feel on this because, unfortunately, this is not a problem that has a zero pain solution. You know, there's, no matter which way we go, and if you look at those numbers up there, it's not a free service. We've been paying for it, we've been increasing the, we've been paying for it out of general fund. If you go back a slide there, you know, if you look at the police, fire, EMS, and fire marshal, the 9.5, 1.5, 1.0, those three are 60% of our budget. So, public safety is 60% of our budget, and that is pretty typical for a city like us. It's a huge expense that we have to provide, and we have to do it well, and so, we're kind of, you know, we're kind of caught here, and we're going to have to all figure it out together and come up with an answer here.
Good job, Roger, on keeping your costs down. I don't know how you're doing that. Guess there's no free candy in your office.
He tells us we have to volunteer X amount of hours a day.
I was going to comment that we're happy to meet again, as we continually do, routinely do, with the volunteer fire department leadership, and visit with them to see if they feel capable of trying to extend the current model at 70/30. What has happened over the last several years, as Rod's very well defined, is that the paid portion of that service has continued to increase and continued to grow. So, we've got to find out from them, is 70% maintainable? So, we're happy to do that work.
I think we're just about to 72%, aren't we?
Real close.
All right, we're good?
Yes, sir.
That four, it was four and a half cents would be added to the city tax rate?
Three and a half to four cents.
All right, so it's about 8%, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would be an 8 cent jump in the taxes.
Yes, sir.
Or that would take us full paid and cover the shortfall in the capital and no charge for ambulances.
Correct.
I think that is going to be a tough sell.
I'd like to echo Mike Foreman and Steve Rocky for all the volunteer time that was put in working together through this, as well as your daily activities, and thank you very much. We'll move on to the budget discussion.
Want to thank Katina and Jennifer for the work they've done so far. This portion of the meeting is not intended to present a budget because we're nowhere close to that point. It's to, intended to provide some highlights and to give you some information that you'd asked for the last time Katina came and spoke.
Thank you.
I will say Friday night or Saturday morning, I think it was, at 3:45, I got an email from Katina, and I questioned the time on her computer to see if she'd been monkeying with it, and she said no. So, she worked very hard to get to this point in this presentation, pull things together. She's had, also had some things, besides being short-staffed, had some other things going on that took her away, and she has just continued plugging along, so thanks, Katina, for the hard work.
You're very welcome. And thanks, Mr. Rucker, for letting council and everyone in the audience know that we are nowhere close to finalizing our proposed budget. As Roger mentioned, we are, tonight's discussion is to give some feedback or follow-up information to last month's meeting on the multi-year financial plan, some of the items that were requested of us by council at that meeting. Historical tax, historical tax exemptions was one of the items that was asked for. Also, alternative revenue sources and the electricity savings that we are expecting to see in the proposed budget. Tonight, we will also talk about key drivers for our proposed budget, those being health insurance increase, our pay plan adjustment that we've found to be needed, employee merit, as well as some recent legislation that will impact our municipal court fines and fee revenue. We'll also look at some of the forces at work that have been presented by the, or will be presented by the city departments, and then we'll also look at our budget development next steps and basically key dates in the development of our budget. As mentioned, last meeting, Mayor Holland asked us to provide historical, a historical summary of the property tax exemptions that we've seen, so we took a look back to tax year 2011 and walked that forward to last year or tax year 2016. As you will see in the, on the slide, our total tax exemptions, all of the possible exemptions that could be claimed by property tax owners in the city of Friendswood have grown from about $675 million in 2011 to almost $832 million in the, in tax year 2016. Not only, as mentioned in the last, at last month's meeting, as our property tax... Not only, as mentioned in the last, at last month's meeting, as our property tax values grow, the exemptions grow in correlation. We also took a look at the number of exemptions that have been claimed from 2011 through 2016. In 2011, we had 13,201 exemptions claimed. And in last tax year, or 2016 tax year, that number grew to 13,799 exemptions claimed. That's about a 4.5% increase over that time period.
Go ahead, Carl.
Are the increase in that homestead exemption?
Yes, sir.
How much of that is based on the value of the properties going up versus some other reason? If it's just a percentage of what the value is?
It is. It's a, the city of Friendswood offers the 20% homestead exemption to each of the residents. So as the values grow, that number grows. We are, as far as homestead, the number of homestead exemptions that were claimed last year of the 13,000... We're going to snooze on it. We're going to snooze on it.
You want to restart it now?
I won't do that.
I don't think we have an awful lot of absentee property owners for our single family.
No, sir.
Or at least it's a pretty small percentage.
Then of the...
That would actually be a good thing.
Of the 13,799 exemptions claimed, 9,900 of those were homestead exemptions.
And the good news is, and yes, the values have gone up, but we have to continue reminding folks, they are taxed on 80% of their value. And that is a tremendous value for any city, and not all cities are able to do that, so.
I don't think there's anyone but us left. 20% goes up, so does the 80%. Flip side is a good thing. It does look like the, I guess, I'm just looking at the colors there, the nonprofits are going up as well, aren't they, the percentage?
And that would be our government, like governmental entities as well, churches, any other non-for-profit property owners in the city.
But you can see a significant jump in that, in that item in the last year.
Right. What was behind that?
I suspect a portion of it is the property on 528.
That's correct.
Could you say?
That as well.
What was that again?
The property?
Which property is that?
The Wickham property.
Oh, the Wickham property. Well...
It would have been that much because it went from ag to nonprofit. But then on the park, yes, yeah.
Any other questions?
Continue, Katina.
Thank you. As far as alternative revenue sources that we explored following last month's multi-year financial plan discussion, one of the items that we have presented to council a couple of times in previous years, I believe 2009, 2011, was the telecommunications sales tax exemption repeal. Currently, the city of Friendswood does not collect on, sales tax on telecommunications services. And those would include cell phone charges or cell phone bills, any local exchange services, installation and service connection fees. These are things, some of the items, call waiting, call forwarding, I don't know that we have so much of that.
It's none of the new kid on the block, but is there a reason why we haven't been charging for that?
The exemption has been available to cities for a number of years. It's just something that has not been...
Council's not chosen to repeal that exemption. It is a council decision. I think Alvin's one of the most recent ones, and one of the few remaining that did not.
We are, of our neighboring, immediately neighboring cities, we're the last.
I'm seeing a common theme here. We're like the only.
Okay, thank you.
The, and Katina will correct me, but I'll go ahead and say it. I think the $200,000 potential annual revenue is based on 10,000 cell phones.
That's correct.
We have 40,000 people here. I suspect there are two to three times that number of cell phones in the city of Friendswood.
Probably close.
Two and a half.
Probably close to 30.
That number's probably two to three times that amount.
Councilmember Gustafson? But they, I don't see there's any real cost to the city for people owning cell phones. There's no maintenance of infrastructure, anything like that, that the city would be involved in. That's not one I don't, I don't think I'd be in favor of.
I do have a question about the credit card fees.
Okay.
So when a person uses a credit card to pay a bill, they're not charged a percentage, but are we charged as a city?
The city is charged.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's the way it is in business.
And with our new, with the Tyler nCode software, there is, for customers who pay online, there is a $1.25 service fee, but that actually goes to Tyler nCode for providing that service. The city does not recoup that, so no.
Sure, which I would be okay with that. I'm just suggesting that if the city has to forfeit 3% of the amount paid because they have a credit card service, the city ought to recoup that 3% by charging an additional 3% for credit card usage.
Right, and our credit card fees as of this year are going to exceed $100,000.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that I think that it would only be fair that if you're going to pay by credit card, that the city should be able to get their full amount of the fee and not give up 3% or 5% to the credit card company. So I would support that 100%.
Katina, you mean when I opened that credit card bill up and all those other charges are on there, that one's not?
The city does not receive it.
Along those lines, I know some of the nonprofits now are charging the fee, or they're giving you the option to cover that fee when you make your donation via credit card. So it's like a convenience fee.
And those credit card fees are assessed to the city, and the city is paying that on phone, credit card payments taken by phone, in person, at our different points of sale throughout the city, as well as internet.
Sure, it's a fee that's supplied by the credit card companies.
Right.
Not by anybody else. Use an American Express, American Express is going to recoup a percentage of whatever it is that you purchased with. Do we know, on average, what the percentage of loss is to the credit card companies?
It varies. The credit card fees are, it's interesting how they're, how the credit card fees are applied because a credit card purchase or a point of sale, if someone walks in with a credit card that, and we swipe the credit card, that's one fee, that's a percentage of the fee. If they pay by phone, it's a higher percentage. So it really just varies, and it depends on the method of payment and the amount of the charge. Our average...
So I know, for example, through my experience, if you pay with one credit card, they're going to charge you a significantly higher percentage than another credit card.
Yes.
And Katrina, I'd just like to ask this question as well. If you're not using a credit card, let's just say you're debiting your account or they're drafting your account, then there is no fee associated with that. So you don't have to pay this fee if you don't use your credit card, correct?
That's correct. Okay, thank you. Now, if we have, we now offer, in our utility billing office, we offer credit card drafting, a monthly draft on a credit card. That would have a fee.
I'm just adding up the first three. Million one?
And the last two bullet points, the garage sale permits, it's less lucrative. And actually, in talking with our permit staff as we were researching this, the cost to implement a garage sale permit fee might be more costly than the revenue that we could gain. Yes, that's true. And then the last bullet point is something that we will explore more as more of the parks come online. It's possibly doing a vendor leasing or commission of services that are provided in the parks. And also during last month's multi-year financial plan discussion, Councilmember Rocky asked a question about the electricity savings. In reaching out to P3, which is the city's electricity procurement consultant, it was determined that our savings for this year is expected to be around $121,000. So our proposed budget for next year will reflect a reduction, keeping in mind that we will net that reduction by our estimated cost for electricity increases at the facilities that have come online, such as the library expansion, fire station, number fours expansion, the Kenneth Camp Fire Station, and then the additional parks. And at this point, we're estimating that to be probably about $10,000 to $15,000 at those, but we will firm that up as we develop the proposed budget. Moving on, if there are no other questions on our follow-up from last month's meeting, we'll move into our key budget drivers for next year. We looked at our health insurance as we do each year. We are expecting an increase to health insurance. We worked through the consortium that the city works with each year. That's the city of Friendswood, the city of Webster, the city of West University Place. This year, we also, the consultants added cities to increase our leveraging power and our negotiating power. And as a result, we requested proposals from competing insurance companies. Of the proposals that we received back, I believe the highest one, it was about 47%. We got that from one of the proposers. But we are able to, Mr. Bender is here, if you have any questions, as we finish this slide. We are proposing right now, or the recommendation right now, is to remain with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We are expecting to see, and we actually confirmed, about a 3% increase on the health insurance. So that was awesome negotiating power. It'll result in an increase, a dollar increase of about $65,000 to the proposed budget. Any other questions? Next. We are, it's a 3%.
3%.
It's a 3% increase. We're a little over $2 million. I believe our health insurance cost citywide, health insurance dental is around $2 million. Another key budget driver this coming budget year will be a pay plan adjustment. Reason for it, salary surveys conducted in 2016, we asked why have a pay plan adjustment or why is a pay plan adjustment needed? When we looked at our merit schedules in last year's, in preparing current year's proposed budget, I'm sorry to say last year's, moved on to 2018, as we started working on developing that. But for 2017, when we looked at our merit, the salary surveys conducted at that time put the merit funding that was included in the 2017 budget where it needed to be. As we have moved through this year, we have seen the shift in the actual labor market, and it's impacting our entry-level police, peace officers positions, some of our mid-level management positions, as well as some of our technical professional positions. We are proposing to implement the pay plan adjustment if, with council's blessing, in the proposed budget. In January of 2018, this would give us a chance to, give us the opportunity to delay a full year impact of that increase on the operating budget. We are expecting it to be around $62,000 in the first year, which would be fiscal year 2018. The full year impact would be about $82,000 if we were to implement the full pay plan adjustment as of October 1. We are expecting to see some salary compression as we, if we were to implement the pay plan with increasing those entry-level positions and the mid-management positions, there would be some compression on the salaries of those in our existing positions above those. So like as the entry-level positions increase or salaries increase for those, then there's compression moving into the mid-level or those employees that have been on staff for a number of years.
And I think it'll come on the next slide, perhaps, if I remember correctly. But you'll recall, I've said this for a long time, we are a service organization, and service requires people. And taking care of people is one of the most important things, if not the most important thing, we can do internally to provide the quality services our customers, our citizens expect. Each year, we come to you with a request for merit funding, which Katina will talk about in a minute. And we try to gauge what the market is at that point to remain competitive in providing those salaries so that, A, we don't continue training and losing people, but B, so that we don't have to come to you every three or four or five years and say, we need a million-dollar salary adjustment process to be put into place and get things back, brought back into order. So this is, I mean, it's $60,000 or $80,000. It's not insignificant in anybody's life or that I know of. But as far as salary adjustments, it's manageable, hopefully.
Any other questions?
Good.
Moving on, as Mr. Rucker mentioned...
Katrina, could I ask you to speak a little louder?
Sure.
Or have him turn up the mic, thanks.
We're older than you. We can't hear as good.
Okay. I will. Okay. As Mr. Rucker alluded to, employee merit is another key driver in our proposed budget for this upcoming year. We, based, looking at our 3%, looking at a 3% increase or 2% for management personnel and 3% for non-management personnel, based on the funding that was included in the 2016, 2017 adopted budget, our estimated merit for next year would be around $435,000. And that would be allocated between the general fund and the water sewer fund as the employees that are on staff, their home departments.
And as Katina points that out, a 2% or 3%, it's not an across-the-board, it's not a COLA, and it varies depending upon the employee's performance. And it's based upon their annual evaluation, and there's a matrix that's built. And so it's, there is no 2% across-the-board increase given to our employees.
Any other question? Okay, another key driver, and this was something that came from the most recent state legislative session. There is legislation that was passed, Texas House Bill 3729 and Senate Bill 1913. Both are related to financially indigent defendants in our municipal court systems. And what this legislation means is that there are several points to the legislation. One being that every citation that is printed will have to have options for, options in lieu of payment of the fines, have to be printed on each of the citations. Proof of financial indigency will have to be verified by our municipal court judge and/or municipal court staff. Community service and jail time credits will have to be offered in lieu of payment of fines. And personal recognizance bonds must be offered to each defendant or each person receiving a citation or arrest within 48 hours of their arrest. This will have a significant budgetary impact. We are expecting to see probably close to half, maybe, maybe close to half of our municipal court revenue could go away.
Since she says half, that's, we're talking $300,000 to $400,000 in reduction in revenue. That is general fund revenue.
General fund.
So when you look at alternative revenue sources, we're trying to cover cost of providing service. This is one that we're going to lose that ability to cover the cost of that service.
And how can we recoup it?
We cannot.
Can we let them do work around town, or what?
You volunteer service, I mean, but it's not a revenue source, it's...
We need to not be fining the indigent people.
And that is...
If you're looking for people like Rocky, who's, you know, pay the fines. Send those guys to court.
And that, and...
You gotta get caught first.
And seriously, that is a big part of the, that will be a difficult issue, and something they're gonna have to deal with, is how do you define indigent? And how do you prove that? But clearly, it's a statewide issue being brought to...
I had no idea we had so many indigent defendants in Friendswood. This is so significant, it kind of shocks me.
I mean, the fact that they, every defendant will have to be offered options in lieu of payment. So if they have the option to perform community service or pay the fine, some may choose the alternative.
Patrick can put them to work on the streets.
But if I heard Roger correctly, there's gonna be a definition of indigent. So not everyone will have this option unless they can prove that they're indigent.
Can prove their indigence.
To Mike's point, I think he's making a valid point.
And that is true. And we are hoping to get more information. Our municipal court administrator, and I believe the judge is planning to attend some legislative update sessions regarding our, for our municipal court staff. And so we're hoping to get more information there.
One of the things we like about you, Katina and Jennifer, is that you always come to us with these conservative numbers. Frankly, I'm hoping that you are ultra-conservative on this, and we don't really lose half of our, not that court fines are something to applaud or anything, but, you know, it is a significant source of income for the city, and I hope we're not really losing half of it.
It is. We actually, well, in our proposed budget, we are planning to include revenue to cover the cost of our municipal court division. So that would be around 485,000. Our current municipal court fines and fee revenue is about 746,000. So it won't be quite half.
Did they give us a definition of indigent?
Not yet.
Or is there an accepted definition of indigent?
I don't think that we have that. Where's, oh. Come to the mic. Pat Riffle is our municipal court administrator. I was hoping that she was here. I hadn't looked back.
I don't want to tell you what the definition is. Unfortunately, at this point, the definition, anybody that receives any type of federal services, including federal student loans, free lunches for your children, anything. That's what the definition that the state's going with right now.
Social Security?
Any federal, if you receive services from any federal program, you can declare an indigent, see on fines and fees, including federal student loans. My daughter came home from law school the other day and told me she was indigent. It's like, okay.
So everybody over 65 who gets social security is by definition...
They can declare, I mean, that population probably won't, but...
So, I mean, in the end, what this means is if somebody didn't want to pay the fine, they can sit in jail for some.
Correct. And, yes.
There's some value to a day in jail, I guess, or...
They can't sit in jail. That's the problem.
That's an option if they want to do it.
If they're indigent, they can't sit in jail, because you can't jail indigent people. They can only sit in jail if you determine that they're not indigent and they refuse to do community service. But you have to offer them that option.
Well, that's, okay, so there's three options for anybody. Jail, pay a fine, or community service.
Yes.
Okay. But the jail bit's being taken off the table if somebody's declared indigent, as is the paying fines.
Correct.
They could still do it, I suppose, if they can come up with money, but you're basically looking at an awful lot of community service projects.
Correct. Unfortunately, this is gonna be labor-intensive and revenue...
Well...
Negative revenue and increase in...
Turn it over to a collection company, and they do a real good job.
They're gonna be hurting also, so. Because if you're indigent, they can't collect either.
All right.
Quite frankly, we've had difficulty in the past providing community service for juvenile or others. Because it's not something that you just hand out a card and say, "Go do whatever." It requires people to be there supervising community service.
Right, right. You're gonna have to have one supervisor for every six, seven people, I guess, right, that you send out? I don't know what the number would be, but it, yeah. All right. Well, I suggest we start thinking of community service projects.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay, another key budget driver, and this is one that comes up each year as we develop our proposed budget, looking at items that are submitted by our city departments as far as forces at work. Or these are typically federal, state, or local mandates that are unfunded, would be defined as a force at work, or things that are market-driven. For instance, a few years ago, when gas prices were over $4 a gallon, a force at work that was included in our proposed budget that year was to increase the fuel line items in our budget. So for this year, what has been submitted so far to, by the departments as forces at work are listed here in the general fund, these total a little under 200,000, and on the water and sewer fund side, about 380,000. The majority of that 380,000 is related to the southeast water purification plant rate increase. And our public work staff is here to offer more information on that, if you have questions.
And to answer the unspoken question, when the fuel increases were that high, today's, as prices went down, our budgets went down for fuel. We didn't just leave it there.
That's true.
And embed it. We do review that every year.
That's true. Thanks, Roger. Any other questions? If not, oh, yes, Mr. Rucker.
Other than the electricity rate, is there anything that you have identified that we can quit doing, or that will be less of a budgetary impact?
At this point, we have asked our departments to scrub their budgets, as we've done in the past, basically starting from a zero base and working our way up. We've not identified anything that is of significance, but each line item in the budget is reviewed for the need to keep those options or keep those programs going, or otherwise.
Circling back to us, we've made upgrades in computer software, things like that. There's gotta be time savings there.
Time savings, but not...
Which is hourly rate.
No, the hourly rates, we're still here nine hours a day. I mean...
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Well, as far as the...
After the training, Bill, no?
But even with that, as Mr. Rucker said, we're a service organization. So our hourly, like, for instance, if I get a new computer in my office or the software upgrade that have happened, I'm still here for 10, 12, 15 hours a day. And we did look at that in that year. We did have some departments, ours, for instance, we did not fill a position, or a couple of positions in our department. So we did see those savings, and they are still unfilled. We...
And Katina, yeah, and Katina identifies that, one, we've had the same thing happen in community development, city manager's office. So we have continued to try to reduce those positions as we can. You reach a pay point of diminishing returns where you can reduce a body, but...
That's...
You're not performing the service.
What I was after is re-stating to us that we did save when we got these.
And that's true.
But we got, there was a savings, because it was told to us it would save. Just, I'm not asking for a number of people.
Okay.
Because the city has grown, so that's all I'm asking for.
And we can certainly provide, again, kind of a recap of what's happened. Another area that is being looked at, James O'Brien is looking at our phone service, trying to provide, replace the phones, and reduce the cost that we're paying right now. So that's something that we'll be working toward.
And I know we're getting towards the end, right?
We are. This is our last slide.
Did we put the $500,000 for the roads back in the budget?
We are developing the proposed budget with the $500,000 in the budget.
And we'll come back to you and see if there's a negative or a positive number at the end. Seriously, we will have a balanced budget of some sort. We don't know what it's going to look like at this point in time. But we do, we have heard you say you want, in addition to the million-four...
A million, in next year's budget, it'll be about a million-four.
Or streets from the sales tax. Our goal, our intention is to put the $500,000 in general fund budget for streets as well. So we'd be looking at a million-seven to a million-nine, which is great news.
Yeah.
Yes.
At least we won't be not getting bids, because we're not spending enough money. I mean, and that's what we're committed to, is getting some of these things done.
Well, and the reality is, is that the sales tax initiative for the roads maintenance is going back out for vote in a few years. If anything, we should spend the additional $500,000 to get ahead in anticipation of that vote not passing in three years. So I don't see how we can absorb it, take it out of the budget, and then be in a world of hurt come three years from now, if it doesn't pass. And us be going, "Well, where are we gonna get $500,000 from?"
I think that wraps it up, right, Katina?
These are key dates in the development of the proposed budget. According to city charter, we'll deliver the proposed budget by August 1st. If council so chooses, we could have budget work sessions on August 7th, and again on September 11th. Our proposed, the hearing, public hearing on the proposed budget, which gives citizens the opportunity to come and address council regarding the proposed budget, will be scheduled for September 11th. If council so chooses to propose a tax rate above the effective tax rate, we would need to have two public hearings. Those would need to be scheduled for latter part of September in preparation for budget adoption and tax rate adoption on October 2nd.
Thank you, Katina.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Katina.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your above and beyond effort in my...
You're welcome.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you, someone.
Legal, our legislative agenda. Who's gonna kick that off, Steve?
Who gets to brief that?
When we had our retreat a few weeks ago, very, at the very end, we talked very briefly about some, that we may want to send some communication to our two representatives, Greg Bonin and Larry Taylor, about our concern about the special session. And there are, oh, five or six items on the special session agenda, ranging from capping city revenue to things like tree laws, or chickens, or something, I've forgotten. But there's four or five of them. And they stem from the governor, who's made several statements about feeling that the state is a patchwork quilt, and that the state legislator ought to, said state legislature should be enforcing uniformities on cities. And so these items are up for discussion in the special session. And they didn't make it out of the regular session, they don't know if they'll make it out of this one. A number of these, clearly, when you look at the press and all that, are aimed for the bigger cities, the Houston's, Dallas, Austin, and things like that, not cities like us. But we get caught in the crossfire on some of them. And so we talked about this. And so we decided we should just do this in session here and see if people are still interested in doing that, putting something together. If, maybe if we were, we could ask them, the city and the mayor, to draft a letter. I think the timing, we wouldn't have another meeting in time, but I'm sure they could capture what we feel and send it. But we want to see if people are, still have that concern or not.
I have the concern. I've already expressed it on other avenues, but I would love to do it through the city as well. Everyone agreed.
What are your concerns?
Capping on cities is a big one. You want to add anything to it?
Well, yeah, one of them is on sales, on property tax. And of course, we all like the idea of our property taxes being lowered. But this law would only affect cities. If you look at your tax bill here in Friendswood, the city of Friendswood's maybe 20% of your bill. The county, schools, and all that are untouched by this. We in Friendswood, well, you heard the discussion earlier, we have the 20% exemption. We give the over 65 exemption. We have one of the lowest tax rates in the Houston area. I feel like we do an outstanding job of managing this. And I also feel like local officials can be much more easily replaced than state or federal officials by the population, you know? In terms of shorter time, and if they don't like what we're doing. And I think the idea, in all of these five or six things, that a legislator who's up in Amarillo has more say about what we do in Friendswood than we do. And, you know, Councilwoman Branson was talking about a few minutes ago, about how, you know, we're different in all of these things. So this idea that we're, that we're, that we all, we need to homogenize all the cities, I think we like being different in Friendswood. I think it attracts people here because we're different. And so I feel like it's a little bit of a government overreach, to be honest. But, you know, we have two terrific legislators, and I trust them to do the right thing. And I just think we should make our opinion noticed, that's all.
I think that's part of my question, is what message are we sending? If you're referring to the capping of the appraised values of single-family presidentials at 5% as opposed to the current 10%, then I support that. So because the city, yeah, the city has the ability to increase their tax rate as much as they want on the appraised value of the home. So I wouldn't necessarily disagree with my property value not going up 10% a year.
I don't think the, I don't think the appraised value is part of this law. It's just the revenue the city can generate.
Isn't there one that would...
It's the, it's the rollback, the effective tax rate and rollback rate. Currently, a city can increase up to 8% without causing a petition or an election. If it exceeds that, then a petition can be filed and an election held to roll back the taxes to the previous year. And what's being proposed is reducing that 8% to 5% and making it an automatic election. So those are the two issues.
It costs money.
And as was mentioned earlier, 65% to 70% of our operating budget, which is where property taxes hit, goes to public safety. So that's the, that's what you're capping. Again, so if we're going to craft a letter to our state legislators, both of whom live in the city of Friendswood, what would that letter entail? Because I don't think you would have a consensus on all of the legislative issues and our varying opinions on those. So how do you craft a letter? Is my question.
It's a good point, John. And I really, I mean, everybody wants to raise taxes. So we're not saying, "Hey, we want to raise taxes." I just think, expressing some concern that a number of these bills appear to...
Be inequitable.
To be inequitable, or that the state is taking control that may be better at a local level.
I don't disagree with you at all on that. I'm just suggesting, as a governing body of the city of Friendswood, I'm not sure we have a consensus on all the legislative things that we may disagree on.
We don't.
So how do we send, craft a letter to our legislators expressing our displeasure with what part of what legislation that's on the agenda? Because we have varying opinions on both.
Why don't we just formulate the letter, and we can just, if we don't think we have consensus, X it off, and then forward what is good? That'd be a way to get it styled and moving. Carl?
On more than one occasion up here, I've heard that we have two state legislators in Friendswood. We actually have three. Dennis Paul represents the Harris County side of Friendswood, and I want to make sure we don't forget that. Two, like John, I really don't have a problem with this 5% cap, okay? If, we ought to be able to live within that. I can't, if there's a, if there's a... I, I can't, if there's, if there's a situation that requires an increase in the budget, then, you know, that's why I don't mind having a little bit of money in the over ninety-day fund to cover that kind of thing. But we ought to be able to live within a, an increase, a five percent increase in the budget. It would have to be something extraordinary. And if it were, we have the ability to go out for an election and sell the problem. So I, I don't have a problem with the five percent cap. As Councilman Rocky pointed out earlier, I don't think that legislation's really pointed at cities like Friendswood. It's pointed at Houston and San Antonio and Dallas and Austin. And we are caught in the crossfire. They could modify the, if it, give everybody here that much heartburn, I suppose we could encourage them to modify the legislation to include cities over one million people or something like that and, and try to give that a go. The other thing is, you know, John's right, I don't think we're all going to agree on, on the legislation or that, or our position on various pieces of legislation won't, won't necessarily be harmonious. Perhaps the better thing to do is if each one of us feels that strongly about it, just draft a letter to the state rep and send it yourself, which is what I intend to do.
I've already done it, and I just wanted to give you the opportunity here as well.
If you guys don't feel like we, we would carry more weight as a council, that's fine.
Yeah, and again, I, I mean, I think it would, but, but I don't sit down in the coffee shops with citizens and talk about state legislative agendas. And so I would hate to think that I'm representing the entire community of Friendswood based on the upcoming legislative agenda when there's not consensus on this council that we're opposed or supportive of any of the legislative items.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I agree with Councilman Gustafson. I think you just, I think you carry more weight because you are an elected official in the city of Friendswood whenever you express your displeasure or your pleasure for particular items to your councilman or your legislator.
And for the record, I'm, I'm, I have no problem with the tax thing. We, we've stayed below the five percent comfortably in Friendswood. And, and we've done a fabulous job, I think, of, of doing that. And I like lower taxes just like everybody else. So I'm, I'm fine with if we just want to do individual or, and, and go for it, so.
And that was just the one item that I picked up on. There, there's many others. Like you mentioned, the, the free-ranging chickens or whatever it is.
Some of it's silly, I understand, but it, but what if they come back? Well, you know, we could speculate what they're going to do in future years.
Councilmember Branson?
If I'm understanding correctly, I think the essence of what you were after was that we feel like this may be a little far-reaching, and we'd like to keep the control at the local level versus the state level. So it might be good for us to at least take a look at this another time, one more time. I realize we may or may not agree on everything, but I think there's an essence here that we're going for that says we'd like to retain the say-so at this level, which is where you started out with versus somebody in Amarillo telling Friendswood what to do. So I think that's the essence of what we're after here tonight.
Ready? Good. Item D, electronic billboards.
I would promise is the last time I get up tonight, but I would hate to lie to you.
I just don't have a bunch of slides.
I don't have any other items I'm supposed to get up for, I'll put it that way. There are no slides for this item. You may recall a number of months back, we talked about the potential of adjusting our current sign ordinance to allow for a billboard to be upgraded from the current static billboard to an electronic billboard. Currently, billboards are prohibited in the city of Friendswood. Appendix A of our code of ordinance prohibits billboards. And therefore, the five that currently exist are grandfathered. They're allowed to stay in their current form in perpetuity. There's a provision that if they were to be upgraded, enlarged, modified in any way, shape, or form, or converted from a static one to an electronic one, that they would lose their non-conforming status. A few months back, you were presented with the idea by the owner of sixty percent of those billboards to convert and upgrade the facility from a static one in exchange for an electronic one. It would allow for more dynamic marketing, allow for more ad space, as well as be able to communicate vital city information during emergency events, communicate upcoming programs that the city offers, and allow for, basically, the, the newer billboards are a lot nicer than the old ones. If there's a consensus amongst council, staff can bring back to you at a later meeting an amendment to our current ordinance to allow for the, the change. I will point out to you, the sign ordinance, unlike any other ordinance in Friendswood, does not allow for a variance. So the only way to allow for this change would be to modify the code. Any questions?
Are there, for, for just a particular sign that's going to go electronic, are there any state regulations that go on? If it's on a state highway?
There is. The state, the Texas Department of Transportation regulates the number of images that can be progressed through or changed with, over a certain period of time so that it cannot become distracting to drivers. So they can't necessarily change it every one second to another ad, causing an issue. There's a regulation of the amount of light that it emits so that it did not become blinding to motors.
I, I think it's an upgrade. And I think, you know, if we have non-conforming businesses in our downtown overlay district who wanted to put stucco instead of whatever they had, we wouldn't tell them no because they would lose their non-conforming status. Instead, you have to sit there and rot until you're gone, and then we'll replace you. In my opinion, it's an upgrade. They're, they're significantly better. And I would suggest that we make changes to the ordinance to allow for the upgrade of the signs.
Then the modifications that I'm suggesting would not allow for the installation of new billboards. It would allow for the existing billboards to be upgraded.
And, and, yeah, and I, I'm not proposing.
Yes, sir.
No more than what?
No more than, no more than forty-nine percent.
But, so, so what you're saying is that we could rewrite the ordinance to allow all five of these billboards to theoretically become LED if they met the state rules and all that. But they would still, could not be any taller or any larger than they are today. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I think one of the advantages is, besides the upgrade, and I agree, is that you also have the ability to, if we have those amber alerts, those silver alerts, I mean, you can use it for those things. And I think that's very helpful. So I would see this as an improvement. I do agree with not increasing the number of signs, but I do see the, this is an advantage to upgrade the existing.
Just so everybody knows the locations, there's two at the RV Park on twenty-three fifty-one, and then farther down, there's two more. There's one at the intersection of five twenty-eight and Blackhawk, and I think that's the one in discussion.
Correct.
Councilmember?
I'll just say, I, I, is this going to bring in more sales tax to the city?
No, the sales taxes is determined by the point of sale, which their offices, unless they were in Friendswood, and we can encourage them to locate an office here in Friendswood, we would not get an additional penny. However, I would like to say that the, the value of these signs would be greater than that that's currently on the ground. So we may get a few more dollars in property taxes.
Well, I was in favor of this several months ago when it was first brought up, and I'm still in favor of it. I think it is like John Scott said, it's an upgrade. It, it's, I think it would benefit the city. We would get some portion of the, of the ad space once every minute or whatever it is, all the space if we need it for an amber alert, something like that. So I think it's definitely an upgrade. If we're stuck with billboards, and we are with these five, then I, I say upgrade what we can. Get, get the most bang for the buck out of it for, for the city, so.
And there would be no pictures of me with my glare on the head on these billboards, are you sure?
Yeah, can we put that in the ordinance, no pictures of Mo?
Yeah, I, I, in the ensuing months, there, there's an electronic sign on Beltway Eight when I go to work at one of my clients, and I've been paying attention to it now since this discussion. And it's actually very attractive. And I tend to get stuck in traffic there, so I, so I watch it flip over. And, and they are, they are nicer looking, more modern. They obviously allow to carry more information, and we get our piece of it. We get seven seconds out of every minute or something. So we're getting a, you know, ten or twelve percent of the time to use as we see fit. So I support it, too.
Councilmember Gustafson, any comments?
How many other non-conforming signs are there in the city currently?
Billboards are.
No, not billboards, just signs. I mean, it's, the billboards, it's a kind of a sign, it's a sign.
Off the top of my head, I would venture to guess thirty percent, but I don't know.
Are we going to allow those thirty percent to upgrade something?
We currently allow those to upgrade in terms of resurfacing, adding new lighting in them, repainting, changing the sign.
But we wouldn't allow them to upgrade an electronic sign, or would we?
If y'all want to make that a part of this, definitely we could.
No.
Well. I think we're walking down a slippery slope if we don't. I, I don't want to do it.
All I'm saying is, I went over my notes, and we discussed this years back. And it was a big problem having Vegas signs up and down downtown. Now, the reason I pointed out where these are located are not within the parameters of downtown and close areas where distraction would be important. And they're elevated for high visibility.
And they're at the entrances of our city.
That's where I'm coming from on it. Got a lot of rub from people not wanting these blinking signs and stuff downtown, so.
Including the ones that we pay for.
That is correct.
We have, no, we have our own.
Library, park.
We have three. The city currently does. And we do allow for electronic signs. You'll notice the Gilbreth sign, the French church sign, our signs.
But they have to be, they have to be conforming.
Yes.
All right, they've got to be monuments.
Thirty-two square feet.
Yes, sir.
So this won't be getting any bigger either.
Correct.
And it all falls back on the principle that if you don't upgrade them, they eventually fall down when people want them to fall down.
Well, I think these in particular are safety items if they fall down. So we don't want these to fall down.
I will.
And there was the original request, is a big, huge steel pole and a very modern-looking sign. And it isn't coming down anytime soon on its own, so.
I can tell you, a lot of folks don't even know it exists. I got a call from a frantic council member when they were changing the face of that sign, said, "Mo, did you realize there's a, there's a, they're putting up a billboard in the middle of the night?" And I scratched my head for a few minutes and then concluded that sign's been there thirty years and just no one's noticed it.
I'm talking more.
Those that are paying for the advertising want to hear.
I'm talking for the, the ones that are made out of telephone poles that are dilapidated.
Well, there's one, yeah. I know which one you're talking about. It's on twenty-three fifty-one.
Yeah, there's two right there.
I think staff has got enough direction.
Okay, thank you.
We'll bring some items back for consideration.
Okay, Capital Projects, Patrick, you've got a few minutes to make it quick. Was I subtle? Plus, you, let me reword that, I didn't say it right. You've accomplished so much that there's probably very little to update. Going for a world's record here, Patrick, go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. And I will be brief. There are a lot of projects that we've completed, so therefore, the, the number of slides are reducing. Fire stations, the Kenneth Camp Fire Station, the one at Fire Station Four is on the docket later this evening for acceptance. I think that all those involved, and I would specifically say Greg Otto, the volunteer fire department, our staff, the contractor, the architect have done a, definitely put in a lot of hours for all the work that they've done for both the Kenneth Camp Fire Station, as shown right here, and the Fire Station Four. The move-in date, Greg Otto was targeting was, I want to say August third, August third or August tenth. I, I forget which one they're, they've come down to. Do what, sir? Yeah, they're, they're determining when they want to move in.
They're good to go. Just take a minute, counsel, and scroll down and see all the projects that have been completed. I wouldn't have thought that would have been possible.
He says try to get them all done in seven years?
Yeah. I want to thank the people involved out there that did the work. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm impressed.
Well, I feel bad about having this next one. So Centennial Park, we haven't shown any progress in the last several months.
People are playing basketball in there, aren't they?
But for those of you who attended the awesome facility, the awesome festivities for the July fourth, you were obviously getting some sort of a beverage or food in this area. There is a minor, I don't want to say minor because it, it restricts the ability to get a certificate of occupancy, and we've been harping with the contractor on that. In fact, sent them a very nice letter that they probably didn't like to get. And they'll be receiving that in the next couple of days. So our street bond project is actually kind of twofold. We have our original four streets, Shadow Bend, Winding, Mary Ann, Towns. All four of those are open and fully operational on Winding Road. This was the last portion that was finished. This is on Riverside, an add-on based on the drainage, how the drainage was going down towards the inlet at the end of Riverside Court, so this was recently done. This big picture right here does show the radar or the speed. And apologize for the picture, but in order to do it, I had to be driving, so therefore, it kind of shows. Shouldn't actually do that, so.
The passenger was taken out.
Right, passenger was taken out.
That's what you bet.
Yeah, that, that's why it was at nine. But I do want to point out, as you see, this vehicle right here is going in front of it. So if you get above twenty miles an hour, it starts to flash. I was hoping to get it when it's flashing and show what the actual speed was. But that's an example of how when you get above, you are, it is illuminating right at you what your current speed is going.
Councilmember Gustafson, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
What is the cost of that sign right there? And just wanted to let you know that I've had requests for those on other streets. People's, the response has been very favorable to it.
I want to say it's twenty-five hundred. It is.
What's the installed cost?
Twenty-five hundred.
That's it?
Turnkey?
Turnkey. I, I could be wrong because I don't have my notes in front of me, and that's.
Clarify that for next meeting.
I can, I can definitely do that.
Budget?
So the, the next project we'll talk a little bit about is Woodlawn. And I want to clarify, you know, on the, on the AI that I, that I send out, sometimes I anticipate what the contractor's going to be doing. So if you read the, the one-line portion of the contractor has demolished one half of the road and is progressing towards pouring concrete on one lane. There has been some delays due to the availability of some boxes, for the drainage boxes. And there's a, there's a cable that goes across basically towards the twenty-three fifty-one side that pretty much everybody's denied who it is, and, but yet it still looks like it. So we went through our final thing today of ask verifying at AT&amp;T, Comcast, CenterPoint Gas. That's exactly what we're doing starting tomorrow. They are pouring seventy yards of concrete. But I, I did want to apologize for misrepresenting this, this status of the road. We are pushing on the contractor to get finished. Weather delays, there really hasn't been that much over the past month. Not on, correct. They do have holes from Heritage in, in the, in the pavement from Heritage back towards Shadow Bend, but they haven't actually demolished it. I imagine once they do pour the seventy yards tomorrow, weather permitting, that they will start tearing that up. And that does jeopardize the August sixteenth completion date that we were looking at for school. And that is something we are in conversations with the contractor, and we'll need to have conversations with.
Use the word imperative.
Yes, sir, I can definitely do that. This is basically from the, from the mobile home plate, mobile home complex, looking, looking to the south towards Heritage is right there. Old City Park, we're in the middle of design. We used the comments from last month's presentation to get them. Old City Park, we're in the middle of design. We used the comments from last month's presentation to get them going in the right direction. On this Station Twenty-three, we have a specific price for what it'll take to evaluate the wet well. Evaluation requires us to pump everything down, have bypass pumping in line, have somebody clean the, clean the existing wet well, and then have a company, or have a consultant go in and actually analyze it, whether it be as, as little as just looking at it, or doing some sort of coring or whatnot to actually get that done. Received those numbers on Friday, and that'll be something that I'll be working with executive staff to determine if that, if that's the methodology we wanna go forward on that. Text dot items. Last month, it was, it was asked if we kinda number up, number them, each one of them. These first three, the five-twenty-eight and Whittaker traffic signal, approximately ninety-five percent complete, looking at a November, December wet time for, for the bid projects. The five-eighteen and Dunbar Estates traffic signal, currently there's a blinking one there, whether or not that looks like it meets the warrants. It does not, at this time, look like it meets the warrants. They're finalizing the study, but it doesn't look like, the preliminary data doesn't look like it meets it. Yes, Council?
Uh, once the senior apartments are put in over there, Bedford, we expect that to change?
It's possible, but if, the last I recall, looking at the Bedford, none of their exits actually go to Dunbar. So if they're not actually exiting at Dunbar, it's, you're, you're one of the, you know, you're looking at several different components, mainly looking at the, the cross streets and how much traffic volume they have, accidents, and all that bunch of other things.
I do get complaints about that intersection being tough to get out, to make a left-hand turn, people having to turn right and...
Absolutely.
Yeah, having to turn right and then left, you know, and protected left at traffic lights to get turned around.
There's commercial property out in front of that Bedford that's gonna be infilling their Bedford's, gonna stay behind it.
Correct.
And... There was a fatality out that way some years ago, too, if I'm not mistaken. One, yeah.
Text dots road though.
Well, what is, what's, I mean, you know, are we thirty-eight cars short or something, and they just took this on the wrong day? Or are we thirty percent short, or, 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 I mean, I, I, I guess the driver is just the amount of traffic, right? That, that and only that?
You look at, you look at the, the main road itself, and you also look at the traffic coming on the, on the cross street. So, it's, there's not a specific, it's, hey, if you get a hundred cars there, it's, it's a percentage of what, how much volume you have, and on five-eighteen, you're gonna have a lot of volume.
Right.
Especially at any given time. But they also look at peak times, you know, is there, is there a certain time period where you get, you know, at four, four, five, six, you know, seven, eight? At, at times when, you know, people would traditionally be going out and going to work, but even those numbers don't necessarily make the, make the warrant.
I mean, the power's there to run the lights, 'cause they've got the flashing lights out there, but couldn't they upgrade that full, full-blown light, and then perhaps operate it as a flashing light during off-peak times? I'm just trying to come up with suggestions. This isn't, you know, from before I was even elected, I had complaints about that intersection.
Can you find out what latitude we have?
I'll just get back to it. How far away are we from hitting their magic numbers, is what I'm curious to know?
Patrick, I think you said you're, they're finalizing their study, and you'll get those results, and we can bring those back.
And I, and I can ask those two questions.
Okay.
Um, the five-eighteen and, and Shadwell left turn striping, that's really when you're coming off of, coming out of Shadwell, as, as you've left either the park or...
One of the...
One of the several commercial establishments on there. Taking a left, you know, sometimes, middle of the day, ten o'clock, it's really not that big of an issue. You try and do it at, say, four, five, six.
Twelve o'clock on Wednesday.
Twelve o'clock on Wednesday, or, yeah, right after Rotary. Probably not, or right before Rotary.
It's the truth.
So we're looking at doing some striping to, to discourage taking a left turn and taking a right to either go down to the next light and turn around, or...
Or community service people holding flags out there for people to get out, and then...
That's...
Newly noted.
For those who just got fined for traffic violations, we wanna have them...
There you go.
The, these next three items are all go to the fiscal year budget. There wasn't any money in the fiscal year budget, their budget year go, Text Dot's budget year goes from September to August. There is no money in this year's, which completes itself in, in less than two months. However, we have been talking enough with the district engineer. In fact, sent an, another email again today, looking at those three items, specifically the five-eighteen and Winding Way right turn. The width of the lane is actually wide enough, it's a matter of, of doing the restriping the lane, which restriping our portion of Winding Way wouldn't be an issue. It's the thermoplastic on five-eighteen, where you'd have to move the lanes back, or the stop bars back, that is a matter of having to work through. The five-eighteen and twenty-three fifty-one turn bays, we're looking at north and southbound traffic on, on, on five-eighteen as you're turning left or right onto twenty-three fifty-one. And the final one is the five-eighteen, five-twenty-eight left turn bay. If you're heading from League City to the Pearland area, or to the downtown area, it's mainly extending that one to have a longer bay turn. But like I said, all of those are something that would be done on an, on an annual basis, and we're trying to get them in there so those projects are available.
And remind them of how user-friendly we became on twenty-three fifty-one when they weren't.
Right. It is the same district engineer.
Can, uh, what about left turn base on the twenty-three fifty-one side of that intersection, item five?
Um, on item five, you come up, as you're coming, as you're, as you're heading west on twenty-three fifty-one, or towards, towards the area...
I'd say either way, I've been stuck, you know, the, the, I've, more than once, I've seen, we just run out of capacity in the left turn lane on, on the twenty-three fifty-one side.
I know that the, the side closest to the school, that's more of a, more open, because there's not necessarily a concrete structure.
And it may be a repaving issue, yeah.
Right.
But on the other side, uh...
There is a restriction mainly because of the, the cross street or the, the turn lane going into the, into the fast food establishment that's right there.
Yeah, well, they got some real smart guys, they can figure it out.
Excellent.
Okay.
That it?
Last slide.
All right.
On the city, on the city side. We are still looking at the Mandel Bridge. I anticipate bringing an item before council, an agreement between the Gulf Coast Authority and the city for the city to provide twenty percent of the costs, Gulf Coast Authority to provide eighty percent of the costs on the rebuild of the bridge. We have received several comments about, hey, what's the, what about not repairing it? I imagine there'll be some people that come to council on, at the August meeting, voicing their opposition. However, from a police perspective, I know police does wanna have that access ingress egress, along with from a fire perspective. The ingress egress is always, is also important. The second and, and final item on there is, and, and several of you talked about earlier, the five-hundred thousand dollars. A portion of that is being spent for the pavement management study that's being conducted, which were tentative, were slotted for having the vehicles come out here in the mid to late October, early to November, early to mid-November timeframe for the two different aspects that'll be inspected. But we're, we'll be going out for a project to repair portions of Sam Mckinney and Sam Miguel. In the next couple of weeks, we'll go out for bids for those, so we'll see if having additional money can help fix those things. And that was the last slide.
Thank you, Patrick. No questions?
Okay. Important things to discuss in the executive session, I understand.
Thank you, Patrick. Council, if you would let me suspend the rules, I'd like to jump down to, uh... First of all, I see everybody in eleven here, and then I'd like to listen to the city manager's report on number ten, but eleven first. Does anybody have a problem with that? Everybody on item eleven is here. Discussion and possible action regarding approving appointments, reappointments to the following boards, commissions, and committees. Planning and zoning commission, A, and B, community and economic development. Do I hear a motion?
Make the motion.
But, second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? I'd also like to move down to the consent agenda. Oh, yeah, clarification on Howard subdivision. Okay, other, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody else? So you made your motion to accepting all the consent agenda except C?
Correct.
And you make your second the same? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Do you wanna address C now, Councilmember Rocky?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, uh, so let's make a motion that we have, I'll make a motion that we approve item C. If you'll second it, you can have the first discussion, I don't need to discuss. I make a motion, we approve item C on the consent agenda. Okay, you can have the floor.
All right, just waving at me. For myself and others who are affected, I'd like to hear a little more about this motion. I just wanted to have more discussion on it and not have it be a consent item. So can we get, can we get a little more detail?
So, um, what's, what you would be accepting if you approved this item is the public infrastructure that's been installed on there. So you're looking at approximately fourteen-hundred linear feet of water line, potable water line, and eight-hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer line. A lot of the, a lot of the discussions revolve around the drainage, revolve around the detention pond, you know, where, those are all gonna be private. Today, they're private. Once development's completed out there, it'll still be private.
And this is the property, this, this is covering both the, the existing property that's commercial and covers a piece of property that is currently zoned off of space along Leisure Lane, right?
Yes, sir, it's, it's all of that, the Howard subdivision, which consists of both of those.
And, and what I hear from residents is when it rains, that pond fills up and doesn't drain. Is that...
It does now.
That's been completed since then?
That has been completed, and it doesn't flow into Jack in the Box and Starbucks.
And, and, and there have been some temporary measures that have been installed to help prevent that. I'm sorry?
No, they're graded.
Sandbags, no, more like a moat.
They cut the grade. Councilman Hill and I talked about that.
So, I mean, all of those things, once, you know, the, the property's sold, which this helps go towards that, those properties can't necessarily be sold because a plat hasn't been recorded. Plat can't be recorded until the public infrastructure approves it, and the Drainage District approves it, because there's, both parties actually sign off on that.
Has the Drainage District, District approved it?
Drainage District has not approved it at this point.
Has it been brought before them?
It has been brought before them. One of the things that they're looking at is the ninety-five percent germination of the detention pond. If you were to go out there today, it's easy to say it does not have ninety-five percent germination. That is something that developers, they have hydro mulch, they've, they've seeded, they've done soil tests. One of the things that they did that doesn't necess, that doesn't help it at all is, when they dug the pond, a lot of, a lot of the lower portions of the pond, which didn't see daylight, didn't necessarily have the nutrients, were used to form the sides, the sides of the detention pond. So when you have that, a lot of times you have to put additional nutrients in. They have had numerous soil samples taken and, and identified, hey, it's lacking these particular nutrients, and they've tried to enhance those. And, in fact, they recently, I talked to the developer earlier today, they've taken another sample based on how the germination is going. You know, one, one picture that, that you saw earlier, you may not have noticed, on the fire station. Last month, you saw a lot of barren areas. You look at it today, it's all green, and that's in the same thirty-day period that the developer out there has. He's just not, he just doesn't have the soil that he needs out there to do that.
He dug down farther than the police station to, or the fire department, go ahead.
Right.
The only thing that impacts us here are these buried water lines. The, the detention pond is the concern of the Drainage District, correct?
The, the germination of the detention pond itself.
The detention pond, the, the maintenance of the detention pond will be done by...
Will be done by, the, the maintenance of the detention pond will actually be done by the developer itself, or a consortium of how they, how they define that. The detention pond, the maintenance of it is all gonna be private. There are ways to have a detention pond and be maintained by the district, however, they do not, they do not maintain...
It requires a fee or something like that.
It requires a fee, and it requires it to be a dry pond. This is not a dry pond, this is a wet pond.
Okay, all right. Wouldn't it be prudent for us to wait until after the Drainage District has approved this, before we approve it?
Yeah, the infrastructure that's in it, that we're talking about it, though, is, is still, in essence, ours.
The components of the project that are being considered are that we have purview over, have been completed, so we have no jurisdiction to deny it based upon the, the drainage. The plat only takes into account the public infrastructure that we would assume liability on, which would be the water line and the...
So what you're saying is, we're not allowed to say no?
In some respects, yes. The, the acceptance of public infrastructure is ministerial in nature, it's not a subjective item.
But, but it's the Drainage District that's driving the design of the pond, correct?
It is, but the, the, it's not public infrastructure for us to, to accept or deny. What, in essence, what we...
Now, I understand what you're saying, because they're not, it's not being transferred over to us.
Correct.
So what, what's being transferred over to us with these eight S water lines, they...
Correct. The, where it would come into play, Councilmember Rocky, is if, when they're ready to get a certificate of occupancy, if the drainage is not functioning, they would not be allowed to get a certificate of occupancy. To that's the extent we can hold it, but the acceptance of public infrastructure. Well, typically, they build the detention pond in conjunction with the construction project when they're building the vertical elevation, but they're not doing that this time. They, they had a developer do one component of it, and then the commercial businesses will do another. We can withhold certificates of occupation if, occupancy, if it's not complete at that time, but the acceptance of the water and sewer are the only things within our purview with respect to the plat right now.
And this just starts the warranty period on the...
For the water line and sewer line.
One year, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? It's going to be four, five, one. My parents had to get me, tell me to stay up late to get me to go to bed. Sure that happened around here a lot. Uh, city manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our summer's always very busy. We have the concerts in the park, and we culminate at the Fourth of July with, with the large concert and fireworks that night. And immediately thereafter, we have the movies in the park lineup. That will begin this Friday night and go for the next five Fridays. And, uh, these are all held at the Evelyn Newman Amphitheater in Centennial Park, except for the last one on August eleventh, which will be the annual dive-in movie that will be held here at Stevenson Park Pool. I mentioned the July Fourth activities. We had another outstanding year of Fourth of July fun. I wanna thank the volunteers and our, all the city employees, because that, that goes across all the various departments. For all the planning, the execution that day, it's a long, hard, hot day for all of them, but thousands of people enjoy it every year, and I thought they did a bang-up job and really appreciate their work. Third item are TAMEO awards. TAMEO is the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers. And this year, Katie Blanchard and our Parks and Recreation Department submitted two projects to that organization for consideration, and the city received two awards, a second and a third place in two different categories. So I wanted to congratulate all of those, Katie and other employees who were involved in those projects. And then lastly, once again, the city of Friendswood has been named one of the fifty safest cities in the state of Texas, this time by the Safewise Report. We ranked number eleven. We were one of two cities in the Houston metropolitan area that were in that, that category, that recognition. So I wanna thank all of our public safety officers, our police, and all those involved for the excellent work that they do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, close the executive session. Uh, executive conference room adjacent to chamber, uh, council chambers, City Hall A. Communication from the public regarding executive session topics. Council may convene in the executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Co-Pursuit to Section 55107. Deliberate, deliberating, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations to deliberate on the offer of a financial or incentive to a business prospect with possible discussion and action related thereto in open session in Section 55107. One consultation with attorney regarding pending claims with possible discussion and action relating thereto in open session. Olson, Olson. Were convened. Eight communication from the public to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. Council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Tracy Dim?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council, and all the residents here tonight. I'm here on behalf of Timberfield HOA, and we would like to thank Councilwoman Gustafson and Mayor Holland, as well as Pastor Barnett, for allowing us additional time from the last meeting to, um, meet and talk about the rezoning request that was submitted by Reach Church. Um, happily, we were able to come to a, um, an agreement, and we wanted to show our support of Reach Church, to let them know that we value them and we wish that they would stay with us in the future, and we hope to see, um, additional growth and fellowship there. Thank you.
Thank you. I enjoyed our conversation, too. Uh, I wish you had a Texans jersey on, but... We're just giving you a hard time.
I called that before the invocation.
Dallas Cowboys are. Michael Wood?
I didn't make you feel bad, I hope.
Okay, okay.
How you doing? You're about to approve ordinance T-2017-19, stating that it will promote the public health, safety, and welfare of Friendswood citizens. By passing this ordinance and redefining the definition of a dangerous animal in Section 10-3 of Friendswood City Ordinance, you eliminate dog-on-dog attacks from that ordinance. That leaves one remedy to a dog-on-dog attack in Friendswood. That remedy is State Law eighty-two point zero-one-three, which states that a dog that is attacking, about to attack, or has recently attacked a domestic animal may be killed by anyone witnessing the attack, the owner of the attacked animal, or his representative. Removing dog-on-dog attacks from Friendswood City Ordinance ten dash one-twenty-two, leaving a resident with only the use of deadly force as a, as a solution to the problem is not conducive to public health, safety, and welfare of Friendswood, Friendswood citizens. Having to kill a neighbor's dog is not conducive to public health, safety, and welfare of Friendswood citizens. Currently, under, under the current, uh, city ordinance, ten dash one-twenty-two, a dog that attacks and injures another dog can be deemed a dangerous dog. This imposes a mandate on the dog's owner in an effort to keep the attacking dog under control. If the owner fails to adhere to these mandates and the dog attacks again, it can be seized by animal control and humanely euthanized. Proper enforcement of this current city ordinance is far more important to, to, more conducive to public health, safety, and welfare than placing a private citizen, uh, in the position to have to use deadly force. Now, I don't know what's prompting the change in, in the current ordinance, but every city, almost every city around here, has some way of dealing with, uh, dog-on-dog attacks, either through the dangerous dog laws, some have aggressive dog laws, some have nuisance laws. But if you pass T-2017-19, city of Friendswood has no ordinance, no way of effect, affecting a dangerous dog attack. A dog can go out and kill the dog every day, and about the only thing FAC can do is write a ticket for it running loose in the neighborhood. You need to rethink this ordinance. Thank you.
David Allen?
David Allen, uh, in Friendswood, uh, yeah, I would, I would second what that gentleman just said. Uh, it's hard if you're walking your dog and somebody else that should have their dog on a leash comes over and starts attacking your dog. Luckily, you know, mine was nearby. I used my feet, you know, to kick the attacking dog, but, um, I guess the, the, uh, deadly forces, it sounds kind of extreme for the first time, but it's, it's, no matter what happens, it's a very frustrating situation, very dangerous. Um, I'm talking today on information war. Some of you may have heard of Infowars.com. Um, it's, with all the demise of CNN and admission that they've faked a lot of the Russian, uh, aggression and all this stuff that we've been reading about for half a year, um, it's hard to tell where to go for good news. So two, two places today that I've found helpful in the last twenty years. Uh, one is actually Joyce Riley, uh, passed away. A registered nurse, Air Force, uh, captain flight nurse. Joyce Riley, she lived for many years in Missouri City in the late nineties, and she was a transplant nurse at St. Luke's here in Houston. Her, uh, program was called Nurse Talk, out of, uh, Houston in, in, uh, the late nineties. And then she became, around the year two thousand, changed to the Power Hour, because knowledge is power. So, uh, Joyce Riley passed away the twenty-fifth of June of, after about four years of stage-four cancer battling. Uh, the program is called the Power Hour, and it's available at, um, PowerHourNation.com, PowerHourNation.com, and, uh, you know, free podcasts, and she has excellent people that are standing in for her. Uh, and same excellent, just covering all kinds of things. She was the kind of person that helped put in prison, uh, a nurse that was killing other people, who were killing people's infants, uh, in San Antonio and other places. Uh, and then testified, you know, fifteen years later, ten years later, when they wanted to let her back out, uh, you know, fellow nurse doing this thing, and sued, uh, hospitals for fraud, massive fraud with, uh, government Medicare, Medicaid payments. Anyway, so she was kind of a, and, and then Gulf War illness, she herself was vaccine injured apparently from a, uh, practice vaccine, and then got into all the experiments they'd worked involuntarily on troops over the decades. She made, it's called, it's called Beyond Treason. Uh, very, great DVD on that, to put that all together. Anyway, Joyce Riley's program, ThePowerHour.com, and then Alex Jones, Infowars.com, um, because that's what we're suffering from, is an information war, obviously. So Infowars.com and PowerHourNation.com are, uh, they're available in case you need, um, perhaps more reliable news than what we get. Thank you very much.
That's it? Let's, uh, Carl, let's move back to executive session. We have a motion.
Motion to approve a settlement with Olson and Olson, uh, in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. This item will settle the, uh, litigation with Olson and Olson relating to the city's attempt to purchase parkland from white construction back in two thousand and eight. Uh, city was subsequently sued in two thousand and nine when we were able to complete the purchase and, uh, later settled that suit. City then sued its legal counsel, Olson and Olson. Parties agreed to settle that litigation for two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. Annual report, communication from committees and special reports. Annual report from Library Advisory Board, Mike Sarwitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. During the last year, uh, although statistics for our library show that there's been a decline in many areas during the construction, I think most everyone expected it to be considerably worse. A great deal of credit needs to be given to the staff of the library who kept operations at a professional level. The library is now a credit to the city, and again, the pride we have here in Friendswood. It shows the pride we have in Friendswood. The door count during the year we had was a hundred-and-forty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven patrons, which was down about ten thousand for the year. The current count now suggests that we're well above the two thousand and fifteen levels. The library did issue, uh, over eighteen hundred new library cards to patrons. Total items checked out during the year, uh, of two thousand and sixteen was over three-hundred-and-one-thousand. A decline of about fifteen percent. Current figures again reverse this decline. In order to stay current, the library added over seventy-one-hundred new items during the year. With the remodel, the library still had raised over five thousand dollars by the sale of purged and donated items during the remodel, and are again encouraging patrons to donate books to the library for, uh, sale or for use. This year, the library hosted programs with attendance over twenty-five thousand. This included youth service programs such as Storytime for all-aged children, adult programs such as training programs in computers, job search programs, genealogy, and cultural and educational programs featuring local authors, poets, veterans, artists, and musicians. Use of the library's public computers totaled over forty-two thousand internet sessions, and library personnel responded to over thirty-one thousand reference questions. The library has been able to improve their technology equipment with the remodel, using funds to purchase fifteen PlayStation, Playway launch pla, Playway Launchpads for children that, uh, are pre-programmed to develop reading, math, and art skills. They've added a digital camcorder and video editing software with a green screen for in-house program recording, and a three-D scanner and three-D printer, which is now available to the public. Additionally, we've added four training laptops and updated three public internet sessions, stations, wireless microphone and speaker for the larger Storytime groups. Again, the library qualified for the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement of Library Excellence Award by demonstrating excellence in teen service categories. A little bit of an update on, about the library family. With the expanded children and teen areas and the playground, I would like to recognize Christina, Brenda, Catherine, and Rose, who during the month of May visited all the area schools to tell students about the summer reading club. They have also adopted Rainbow, a guinea pig that was found outside the library. The raccoons that were loose inside the library during the construction were found not to be suitable for domestic life. The library is proud to report that Keith, for the second year in a row, won the five-K run at the Texas Library Association Meeting in San Antonio and was declared to be the fastest librarian in Texas. He also wanted to mention that he is now a proud father. Karen has earned her master's degree in library science and is now also a grandmother. Library Assistant Director Matthew had one of his poems selected to be read and published at the Austin International Poetry Festival. We want to offer special congratulations to Brenda for earning her American citizenship. Thank you.
Discussion, possible action regarding the election of the mayor pro temp? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve Jim Hill as mayor pro temp.
I second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? So the motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Motion to approve Steve Rocky as mayor pro temp?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? So to, show it to be unanimous. Sorry about that. Discussion impossible, uh, discussion impossible, sorry, Steve. Discussion, discussion impossible action regarding former Code of Ethics ordinance. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yeah, so, uh-
He's first, second, and after that.
Yeah, so this is just reinstating the, uh, Code of Ethics that was originally put in place, I believe by Mayor Brizendine back in two thousand and six. Is that correct? We vote to approve this, we're reestablishing that. It basically is just a Code of Ethics for elected officials and members serving on boards about behavior surrounding elections. That's all. It had been approved in two thousand and six, and it had been repealed.
Six months later?
Six months later by a different mayor. I support it.
You have the floor, Mike?
Yeah, this is not anything that we actually need, uh, just to, uh, to have a, uh, policy for, I don't think. I think, uh, we all, uh, would act this way, regardless if there was a policy in place or not, but, uh, we do have a policy and that's, that's a good thing, and, uh, I definitely support it.
I'm in support of this as well. I think that we lead by example here on the council level, and I think that by putting this on our commission, our volunteers on commissions and committees, I think is excellent, but I just want us all to remember, we do lead by example here from the dais.
Councilmember Rocky?
Uh, I'm not sure what I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm processing what both Councilwoman Branson- and, uh, Councilmember Foreman were saying. Are you, are you saying we do need to reinstate this ordinance, or we don't?
I'm saying it's not a bad thing to have a piece of paper. We, we all signed it at the retreat, and now we're just sort of publicly acknowledging the fact that we have it and, uh, making it official.
But, but the, but- Yeah, this is different. There's some different. This, this was a, um, an ordinance, and then, as it said, six months later, was rescinded, that, um, if you were, it puts certain restrictions on people who were volunteers for the city, served on city committees, from, uh, certain activities involving elections. Okay? So it, what it said was, for example, if you were on, uh, uh, planning and zoning, you can't participate in, in, uh, in, um, in any kind of campaign as a person on planning and zoning. You, you always have that right as a citizen, uh, but you can't, uh, you can't sit around and say, well, um, as a member of planning and zoning, I feel this, that, or the other thing. That, that's what the original ordinance did. Um, and then it was, then it was rescinded. Uh, is, when I read the original ordinance, I, I don't know why they put it in, and I don't know why they rescinded it, to be honest. Um, but it, it looked problematic from the standpoint of how do you enforce it? Uh, what it said was, let's say if somebody did something and they violated this ordinance, they could be removed from a, a, a committee, but we can do that anyway. Uh, every single committee, every single person on any committee is subject to being removed by council if the council so, so wishes, so I don't know if it had all that much teeth in it, and, uh- by council if council so wishes, so I don't know if it had all that much teeth in it. And I think it, you know, it's kind of a discouragement to somebody who volunteers for the city to find out that they have been restricted in any way.
Councilmember Branson?
I think all this is saying is that if you are going to be active publicly, you don't use your volunteer title. So you could send a letter from Steve Rocky, but it would be inappropriate for you to send a letter from Steve Rocky, councilman. I think that's the difference in those.
Well, it's not, councilmen are not subjected to that. What are you going to do if I violate it? You can't do anything.
Well, you're right, then you have to put some teeth in it.
But who is, who is subjected to it is people who are on committees. But then the question becomes, what if, so let's flip it around, can a person running for office make statements about people on a committee? In other words, the people on the committee can't make statements in terms of their capacity, but if somebody running for office, can they say, "Well, those guys on planning and zoning, blah, 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 blah"?
Wouldn't be prudent, but.
But the ordinance didn't cover it.
Councilmember.
So.
Scott, and then Councilmember Gustaf.
Again, all this ordinance does is prohibit the chairman of committee XYZ saying that as the chairman of committee XYZ, "I support so-and-so." That's all. It doesn't prohibit a citizen, Joe Smith, from saying that, "Yeah, I, Joe Smith, support Steve Rocky." It prohibits the use of the title as a committee member, where you could give the appearance that planning and zoning, or A, B, and C, support this candidate.
But what if a person, in the course of a campaign, something was said about planning and zoning? It may be inaccurate. Somebody's running, they say something that may be inaccurate, and a person responds on Facebook and saying, you know, "I'm on planning and zoning," and council, or the candidate acts said something that was incorrect, blah, 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 blah. Are they prevented from doing that?
Well, I think, well, first point of order, I think you've already spoke two times on this, and I have now spoken a third time as well. The point of it is, is that you don't use your elected position or your appointed position publicly to support or denigrate a person running for office. That's all. I think it's a good policy. I think it should have stayed in place in 2006. It was rescinded some six months later. I think it's a good idea, and I've spoken my two times.
Councilmember Branson?
I'm probably beating a dead horse, but I don't have an issue with this, as long as it goes both ways. I think it is equally inappropriate for council to be derogatory or disrespectful to others on the commissions or committees as well. And I said earlier, I think we lead by example, and I think it's very important that if we're going to put this back in place, we should be leading by example.
I got an idea. I want to find out why it was rescinded.
Motion to table.
Second. All those in favor tabling? All those opposed? I just want to know why. John? Ordinances.
I skipped one.
I did?
Number, one right before it.
Pardon me?
The one right before it is number 13.
Already, already did that. Now, okay. Discussion and possible, and possible action, you're correct, I am incorrect. Action regarding amendments to the policy for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Do I hear a motion? I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Consideration of possible action regarding ordinance number T 2017-19, first reading of an ordinance amending sections 10-3, 10-12, and 10-122 of the code of ordinances pertaining to definitions, appeal process, public nuisance, and requirements for dangerous animal owners. Do I hear a motion? Fails for no motion. Item B, notice, number 2017-21, first reading of an ordinance providing for non-substantive revisions of the city charter. Do I hear a motion? Got a motion, a second discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. C, ordinance 2017-21, first and final reading of an ordinance amending budget amendment nine to the original general budget of the city for fiscal year 2016-17. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Play the Declaration of Independence, please. This will be our communication, folks.
It becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political.
Except for the volume part.
And to assume among the powers of the earth, the separate and equal station to which laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them.
A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed.
That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government.
Laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness.
Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes.
And accordingly, all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed.
But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object, events is designed to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to pursue new guards for their future security.
Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now necessity which constrains them from altering their former system of government.
The history of the present king of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states.
To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world.
He has refused his assent to laws, the most wholesome and necessary for the public good.
He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and precedent importance unless suspended in their operation till his assets should be obtained.
And when so suspended, he has utterly neglected to attend to them.
He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people, unless those people were willing to relinquish the right of representation in the legislature.
A right inestimable to them and formidable to tyrants only.
He has called legislative bodies at places unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from the depository of their public records.
For the sole purpose of fatiguing them into compliance with his measures.
He has dissolved the representative houses repeatedly for opposing with manly firmness his invasions on the rights of the people.
He has refused for a long time, after such dissolutions, to cause others to be elected.
Whereby the legislative powers incapable of annihilation have returned to the people at large for their exercise.
The state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasion from without and convulsions within.
He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states. For that purpose, obstructing the laws for the naturalization of foreigners.
Refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands.
Did the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers.
He has made judges dependent on his will alone, and for the tenure of their offices and the amount in payment of their salaries.
He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance.
He has kept among us, in times of peace, standing armies without the consent of our legislature.
He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power.
He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their acts of pretended legislation.
For quartering large bodies of armed troops among us.
For protecting them by mock trial from punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of these states.
For cutting off our trade with all parts of the world.
For imposing taxes on us without our consent.
For depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury.
For transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses.
For abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing therein an arbitrary government, and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies.
For taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the forms of our governments.
For suspending our legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever.
He has abdicated government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us.
He has plundered our seas, ravaged our coasts, burned our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people.
He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, desolation, and tyranny already begun with circumstances of cruelty, providity scarcely paralleled in the most barbarous ages, and totally unworthy of the head of a civilized nation.
He has constrained our fellow citizens taken captive on the high seas to bear arms against their country.
To become the executioners of their friends and brethren, or to fall on themselves by their hands.
He has excited domestic insurrections among us, and has endeavored to bring upon the inhabitants of our frontiers, the merciless Indian savages, whose known rule of warfare is an undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions.
In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms.
Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury.
A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Nor have we been wanting in our attentions to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us.
We have reminded them of the circumstances of our immigration settlement here.
We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity.
And we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations, which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence.
They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and of consequenti.
We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation, and hold them as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war, in peace, friends.
We, therefore, the representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress, assembled.
Appealing to the supreme judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do in the name and by authority of the good people of these colonies solemnly publish and declare.
That these united colonies are, and of right ought to be, free and independent states, that they are absolved from all allegiance to the British Crown.
And that all political connection between them and the state of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved.
And that as free and independent states, they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce.
And to do all other acts and things which independent states may of right do.
And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence.
We mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor.